So moving on, in the agenda. First, big thanks to both Rebecca and Jay. I think that was incredible information that we got. It was a lot of information, which really leads us into the next portion of the agenda, talking about a common language, common facts, all related to growth and enrollment, which as we know, aren't necessarily synonymous terms. That's a tough word to say. Like, you want to add to that?
Nope.
Okay. So we're going to open this up to conversation amongst all of everybody. So, and I don't want to start.
Could you just clarify, like, what you mean?
Okay, so if you can see it, Dawn, I am not looking at you, but I'm going to...
That's okay.
...but I'm going to...
That's okay.
Um, Dawn was talking about growth, and could we tie it to enrollment? Well, if we're looking at enrollment coming from older homes and not necessarily new homes, that's two different terms. So it's not saying that just because we've added 75 new houses, we're expecting hundreds of children. We have to take into account 116 babies that were born, and then how they're going to grow over and being healed. And it's really confusing to me that there are common place.
Are we doing, is this on the agenda because we want to rely upon what norms between our two bodies?
Yes.
Can I add that a little bit?
Of course, please.
Yes. Having watched your meetings, watched mine, you know, the Beacon's been referenced as, to nobody's fault, as an example of a big driver to, and this is not actually an effect of Rebecca, I'm actually quoting Amy, but if she's not here, it's all a story on the bus. But, you know, she, earlier in the year, said something along the lines of, you know, well, town council, stop letting the Beacon happen, and if you don't like this enrollment, right? Well, we have eight students in the Beacon and 216 units, right? So I just, let's agree on things that are, that, and Rebecca's slide, I believe, solidified this. The Beacon might not be the culprit, but the best it is, right? So for old stock multifamilies that have up to three bedrooms is the culprit, and not necessarily Carrier Woods, who's one and two and creative. And I know that could shift as those get older and their price point might get down. But those are the types of things, I just think it's important that we all just agree.
Well, are there things that you're asking for?
Yeah, I just, I just want us to say, for instance, one of my biggest takeaways tonight was the, the birth rate, right? Yes, I knew about it. I hadn't really, after Rebecca's original presentation, I glanced, I glanced at her data. But, so, can we agree that birth rate is a significant driver of growth? Because I've never heard a town councilor mention birth rate before, right? So...
Are we capturing this? Like, is the goal...
Yeah, I would like to. Like, we can agree on five things that are just drivers of enrollment, drivers of growth, difference between growth and enrollment. Ken and Betsy both, you know, we have other fish to fry with traffic and services, and that's, that's fine. But it gave you guys some insight into our permit system, it gave us insight into your projections, and now I already feel like we're in a better place.
Would someone could board the whole table? Oh, you know, I, I'm sure, sure here.
So, I had a question for Hillary. Because, so the big takeaway for me on this is how good the model really is. And so, the, you know, 2015, 2016, you know, people started saying, hey, wait, what's happening with the model? We need to have it updated. And so, that's, you know, she came in, but she updated the model, and then the administration is plugging in the numbers to see how it's going. You know, the 170K, you know, so just math, but that's quite 30, 40% higher than this time last year. And so, to me, the thing for the town council, you know, if we look at the growth ordinance, is, is going to be how to look at the impact on one factor, which is the schools, that we, so far, that's really for the growth ordinance, that's the only factor in it. But Councilman Johnson has brought up, you know, that there are other factors that we should probably be considering. But, and if we personally, like, if we were looking at units coming online, it would make sense for me to use the growth model. So I guess, Hillary, no, so I guess you asked Jay about where they, where they got, he said national data or whatever. So I don't, I guess I don't understand why, when we're looking at growth at schools, that we're not just using our school growth model. So I mean, it's, on Mississippi, it seems like it's a good model, and it's, and it's worked for a number of years. So what, what were you referring to specifically when you asked that question of Jay?
I think I was just asking, look, I'm wondering, like, like the fact that, like I was saying, a two-bedroom with 1,200 square feet equals 2/3 of a permit, because they assume that two bedrooms will have two people, and that impacts the town in 2/3 of a way. I guess my question is, like, that data, like, how does one bedroom affect services? How do two bedrooms affect services? How do three bedrooms affect services? Like, where does that come from? And it sounds like it's just, like, kind of what's always been done. I mean, I guess, Jay kind of, I mean, he, yeah, he was like, I don't know. I mean, it just is.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if it's something like, you know, how the government updates, like, the, the poll rate every year? Like, I was just wondering, is this something that's constantly updated in terms of what, like, national trends? How many people, are people living in smaller houses with less rooms? Are people, you know, like, is that data ever updated? That was my question.
And were you talking about the impact that we, that the town looked at as they were considering contract zones and things like that, that you were using a certain growth number on that? Or were you answering the question about the 2/3s?
I guess I'm not sure I quite followed that question. The question to the 2/3s is that, you know, 10 years ago, that, you know, the town, I wasn't part of that process, or at least I, you know, wasn't leading that process. I don't recall exactly the data that went into sort of coming up with the actual numbers, but it was based on, as I think sort of Tom alluded to, it was based on sort of a recognition that there is a lesser, you know, through the models, through what was looked at, through the research, there's, there's less expected demands on, on services. And what that looks like, you know, on schools versus public safety versus public works, I don't know, sort of the various breakdowns offhand, since it's something I've dove into deeply. So to your question, is this something we should be looking at potentially? I mean, there's, as I said, it's been 10 years, and like I said, I don't know, so I think I answered half of what you were driving up, and I...
Alluded to national data, and I just don't, I don't know what you were talking about.
There's, you know, there's just national data that's available for impacts of development, so doing research, looking, going to the, you know, American Planning Association, talking with various consultants, so just doing that type of analysis, I guess.
When you do that analysis, you're looking at what? What are you analyzing?
I haven't done it in 10 years, so I...
Okay, okay. That was my confusion.
Town hasn't done it in 10 years, I should say. So I haven't done it, but I'm sort of, that's how I would approach it, is sort of take a look at what, what's the best available data to work off of.
Right. So I guess that's to my point. I'm not sure why we, I mean, we look at all sources, but it seems like we have a lot of good data to look at from our own experience, our own town, and our own model. So if we're going to try to get common terms, I guess that's...
So you're saying that you're accepting the school model, you're comfortable doing that? That's what I'm hearing?
Yes. The base level multi family.
Yeah, okay. Nick, did you have a thought for Jay or...
Wait, sorry, those are two different bins.
She said she had two scenarios, base level and then base level plus, and that's...
Multi family.
Yes.
The second one.
Yes, the second one.
That's what the school board has been...
Is that an agreement? Because that's what we've been doing. Is that an agreement across the town council as well?
I'm thinking about it.
I don't think it's our role to pick them off. I think she's done a good job with a couple of different potential scenarios that could happen. The variance between what she projected last year and what would happen today for a one-year projection is about 1%. So all the models are going to look reasonable. You can't really judge a 10-year model based on the performance in year one, because these go out 10 years, the variance is more like 10, 15%. So I, I think of it differently, and I, probably because of my experience, but I tend to look at, well, this is what you're expected is, this is the worst-case scenario, and this is, you know, the best-case scenario. And I think she, so I think focusing in on one model is doing us a disservice, because you're locking yourself into something that is going to be wrong. I'd rather understand how wrong do we think it could be, and, and make a decision, if you're talking about a school, based on that. And I think she can help with that.
I think maybe I'm stating it too strongly. I think what we are trying to avoid, let's fast forward anywhere between four months and a year, or, you know, what happened when you, when you do have the conversation that cannot be spoken of tonight. I think what we're trying to avoid right now is us having a reaction of, well, you know, we don't, where did these modelings come from? Or, you know, we reject your premise, right? So I, I think this is an effort, I know this is an effort, to lay groundwork to a, a conversation that just doesn't get sidelined by the council saying, well, who is Rebecca? And where did those come from? I'm trying to avoid that now. So I, by the way, I'm completely on board with you. I, when somebody says that her model is completely accurate, I'm a little confused, because it's one year, right? So I could probably, I mean, it's not a hard prediction one year ahead, and that's on knocking Rebecca, because I...
So she's been presenting...
Yeah, right. I'm just, I'm just saying, I maybe I'm stating it too strongly that we're officially accepting the model. I just, Peter, then Nick, I guess, is...
Actually, Peter, I was sorry, Peter.
Yeah.
I apologize. I was so proud of the two.
I mean, the guy sees once a meeting, lets it out.
Yeah, I just want Rebecca, I think she should talk about it. And as we look at anything, that's one of my issues, I used to do some of this work for GAN and for the opposition, but I liked what Congressman said about, if we could agree that when this does come forward, I think it's really important to look at what is sort of the most optimistic, what's sort of most pessimistic. It's what gives you a range, so you can kind of, there won't be a single answer to that permit. But knowing what those corridors are, that you're somewhere in the middle there, would be really helpful for me anyway, as we approach the conversation. So if we're trying to do here is get common agreement on things, I would love to see if that is something we can agree to, that the modeling will do kind of have a, that's how we do the budget every year, kind of having a meeting. That's really, that's a really helpful framework for me to raise a...
Alicia, are you, did you, are you on how to tell? You were drawing, Alicia then will go, Hillary.
I thought you said I was running. I asked you who was running.
Alicia then.
I guess maybe then, what I would ask for is that if people are going to go out to the community or speak publicly in meetings, that they're not speculating based on their own premise, that we have hired a professional who has been accurate in the multiple years that she has presented the data. And, and we're not making our own calculations and our own predictions. And I, I think it's a fair point that you, we may want to consider ranges, but, but my concern is that people are presenting those as their own facts, and, and, you know, why would we hire this professional who has been accurate, and we have been able to rely on it? And then, you know, there could be 10 other sources of data points out there in the community, and I don't think that's fair to anyone.
And I said that to you, when I said, oh, I could, yes, that was, I didn't mean that way.
I think, I think just based on what John and Peter said, like, I don't think anybody at this table thinks that 10 years out, this is going to be a super accurate prediction. I mean, prediction is volatile. I mean, you can't predict anything that's going to happen in 10 years. But I think the, the pattern that the, and the school board recognizes that, and the pattern is that, you know, we don't wait 10 years to have another enrollment study done. Do you know what I mean? Like, so we kind of follow the numbers, we say, okay, this is really on track with kind of like this model that she recommended as would probably be the best fit. And then when it starts to, I think, you know, into that, whenever we hired her last time, it had been like four or five years, and we were like, you know what, I'm not sure, there's, there's some more growth in town, I'm not sure that these numbers are looking like as accurate as they once were, let's redo this. So I just want to be clear, like, that we don't say, okay, let's have a 10-year, you know, enrollment production, and then in 10 years, we hope that it's accurate and do another one. Like, so it's kind of ongoing work. And I, and I just, I think, I hope that that maybe clears up a little bit of some of the concern about the accuracy of predictions that are 10 years down the road. But I do think that you both have a point. I mean, if you have, so we've kind of chosen what, what to, to look at the numbers based on the model that she thought was going to be the most accurate, and it has turned out to be the most accurate for the past year. But we have the entire report, and we can look at, you know, she referenced six different models, and that is the, the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario. So that information is out there. I think what we're looking for is an acceptance that this information and the, and the modeling that she's chosen is, is going to be the reference point that we all use for enrollment.
Well, and to kind of build on what Hillary said, that the model that she's projected, given us, the model itself is such a small piece of the breadth of that information. And what I'm really doing tonight is realizing that despite what our society might believe, this is not a 144-character problem. So you started this agenda item by talking about, you know, misplaced, maybe sensationalized statements, and those said, well, I'm going to use the Beacon one again for Amy, she's not here. You know, a beacon, if we stop building the Beacon, we won't have problems in our schools. Obviously, we can't use statements like that. We have four really big factors that she champions, and then regardless of what the model actually does, I think those four things are something we need to seriously think about, watch, and also talk about in the community. That's growth rate, that's migration and students, that's turnover of existing housing, and the building of new housing. All four of those things together are what really are leading to a growth in our town that is going to impact our schools, above the many other things that Councilors and talk about around the community that the council has to watch. So I, I agree that her models have been really accurate, as some of the works in educational statistics, I'm amazed at how close they are just a year out. And I know a year's not a long time for variance to creep in there. But what's almost more valuable to me is the breadth of the data that she has advised us in her last slide to watch carefully, as we move forward and watch the changes in our district.
Ken and then Jim Murray.
Yeah, model aside, I, I love the data and the model. I mean, speaking really of things that are going on in our town and not on the national level, and the takeaway for me for the council is we're starting to review our growth ordinance, I know that's just a component of it. But I would feel safe to say that lots of folks are questioning the fractionalization of the two-bedroom home and its impact on the schools. So that's going to be my big takeaway of this discussion, especially in the way we're moving out to middle, middle, how do I just pronounce that? Middle, middle?
Middle or receiving.
And, you know, tiny homes, everything. The mindset is different, especially with the cost of housing in a town in Scranton. People want to move to Scranton, they, if they want to, they're going to have to come to smaller houses. So again, takeaway for me here is that we're going to review that fractionalization of the development.
Jim Murray.
I just have a question, because I've got a set of data here that is from Angel Bradley.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, is that Rebecca and my girl numbers, or are these another set of numbers? Which one is that?
This is the Scourge College School. Does it say edited at the very end?
10-1 enrollment trends observed and projected. And it was given to, Peter sent it to us, Jim Murray, 14th? I guess you were in the steering committee.
Oh, yeah, yeah, those are numbers.
Is it this?
I don't know. I've had this...
All this is, is basically, this is Rebecca's numbers, the best fit with a high impact factor, only age.
So at least that's the source, so...
Yeah. I took it out of all the other tables.
Because I'm just trying to figure out...
Yes, sorry. I just put this together, but these other numbers don't really...
Yeah, okay. So, so she's the sourcing of these numbers. I, I mean, I don't have a prob, I think she does a great job, because I've seen it present before, and not just obviously here. That's why I asked her, where have I seen it before? But that being said, I think that it's important that we look at all different, I don't know, different sources of data, because anyone who's taken statistics or data knows you can make statistics and data say whatever you want it to say, depending on how you approach it. That being said, I mean, I think Rebecca's numbers are great, and they certainly meet your needs, but I think we also want to be looking at, you know, our planning department, and what we're looking at for projections and whatever, because I think when you look at different sources of data, as long as you know that it's accurate, that it's vetted and whatever, then you're covering more bases. And it's okay to ask questions. And it's okay to question the, question the source.
Can I just clarify, Jim Murray, are you saying that you have school enrollment either from the town?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, we also need to be looking at what are the growth patterns in this town, what's coming up?
I wasn't saying we should only use Rebecca's...
No, no, no. And another thing, and another thing we really need to be looking at is bonding. I mean, where are our financial, what's the financial situation? That's another set of data, so I'm just putting that up.
To agree on using the Rebecca's enrollment study as our reference point, but considering the top end and the low end, as, as sort of what we talked about, and no other enrollment study knowledge has been done and presented to all the, to this body, and so therefore, that should be the one that we run from test, is same source.
For, for schools.
For schools, not for the town. Is everyone in agreement with that?
No. Okay. But I don't think you should litigate this, this, this analysis. I think you should use it to try to inform your decision. You should use as much data and information as you can, really try to inform that decision. But I'm not going to say today that I'm not going to look at something else in a couple of months. And I don't think that looking at her high and low is accurate.
That's what you suggested.
Well, no, I think she could get there, but I don't think that the plus and minus 10% is, is that.
I think that we should have to come up with something, we can't be tossing all different kinds of numbers out there. Like, there are going to be documents that are going to be created, exist. And I think we have to at some point, we will always look at multiple sources, but to think one, just to have a conversation, that we're all having the same conversation, we're sharing the same conversation with the community as a whole, just to prevent two people sitting down going, well, they told me this, or someone told you this. That's my concern why. It would be nice if...
Can you just pop one thing in really quick? And I'm so sorry to jump over. There's been a couple of other comments tonight about it's only a one-year study. This has been rolling for 10 years, and it has been spot-on. Can you read? Did Hillary point, it gets updated every, like, four or five years? But it's, or less, but it has been spot-on place. I really want to be cautious to, to be, said it as a word, disregarding those numbers and that there's no accuracy to them. They're within one or two people, students, month over month, and they're very spot-on. This has been some amazing work that's in place. I just had to say that one more time.
That's Jim and then Alicia.
Yeah, I think, John, when you asked her about error, she was not referencing, I think what these guys were talking about would be high and below is the six scenarios that she's put forward. And in those, I don't think she has a margin of error that she's talked about. I didn't understand it that way. She said she was putting in a margin of error on some data she was developing for the Department of Education, for the DOE. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't take that to mean that she was developing any data. And I just, you know, I kind of piped in on the extreme statements, because, you know, we've been saying, okay, well, there's not many students coming to the Beacon, but we've also had a lot of statements out in the community, well, there's no impact from any new development anywhere. So, I mean, extreme statements go both ways, and, you know, the, I mean, if someone can, wants to demonstrate, you know, where this model or method, you know, where they have concerns, you know, I definitely will listen. But I don't, I don't know how many different sources we want for school enrollment data when we have a school department. Like, that's just kind of where, you know, and it, and it has been accurate over 10 years, but, you know, I'm definitely open-minded to hear, you know, alternatives, but...
And we don't have to, I mean, nobody's voting tonight. And John can, John can look at the model and say, I take issue with X, Y, and Z. I'm not, I'm not trying to forbid anybody from looking at stuff correctly. I'm just to the point, I think it's, we have, we have a tremendous amount of pressure on us, trying to spend on capital improvement projects, I'm just trying to lay the groundwork to do it the right way, no matter which way it all falls. I'm just trying to avoid X, Y, and Z.
I appreciate your efforts with this, to present, and, you know, I understand why you would want to lay in the foundation and expectations regarding the Beacon, and that's a point well-taken. And, you know, although I think that Amy's premise was...
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, it's...
Was sound, you know? I can understand from your perspective why that would be troubling. However, you know, with the enrollment data, you know, that's just as resounding for, for us on the board, to have people say, this is only one year, or, no, I'm not going to accept this premise when it's been accurate, and to then go out into the community and use data that none of us know anything about. If you want to do that for your own purposes and question it, I think it's fine, but, you know, it's very concerning to me that there's unknown numbers being cited as, as accurate when we have long-standing numbers that have proven accurate from a professional that we've checked, we check on a monthly basis, and there's no alternative that has proved to be correct. And so if we're here at the table saying this is our goals, you know, I think, I agree with Betsy. I mean, we need to come up with, with a plan, and we need to be respectful with each other as, as bodies and what we mean.
John, Hillary, and then me.
Sure, I just wanted to clarify, I, I do have some technical issues with the work that Rebecca's done, but I think it's fantastic. I, you know, not trying to take away from that in any way. Where most of my issue is, is with the way you guys talk about her work. And talking about it as being extremely accurate is not the way you talk about a statistical model. It's, it's a model. It is what it is. And yes, it may have been accurate up to a point, but that, you're inferring, you're taking a leap and putting that into the future. That's where I have more of a problem than, than anything that she's done, because most of what she's done is reasonable.
It's proven accurate each month.
Right.
Month to month. Her prediction is, is ma, in the middle part, it has that moment, that's accurate.
Right. But using that to justify building a new school is where I have a problem. Use your model, use the fact that the schools are in horrible shape, and I'm your biggest advocate. I feel like we're putting bad data out there to try to make the case, and that's where I have the problem. It's not, anything about building a school, it's that, I feel like we're keeping that, and that is important. That is important.
Hillary, then me.
So, so I have two things. I just, I wanted to say, to Jim Murray's point, I don't disagree with you. I think that the more we can look at, the better. That's absolutely something that I think all of us at this table can, can understand. But, you know, the enrollment data for our schools is just one piece of a lot of data that we have. And I guess my point was that we don't use this by itself, you know, locked in a room with nothing, you know, with nothing else. It's not a vacuum. But when we talk about school enrollment, if that's your specific piece of data, that we all use the same information, and, and what we're asking for is for that information to be from this report. You can use the low model, you can use the high model, I don't care, but, but the point is that it, just for that one data point, when you talk about school enrollment, that's what I'm trying to say, not that we don't, not that we ignore any other pieces of data that are out there. And my second thing is, you know, there are a lot of rumors flying around about our new school, and what the justification is for building it, and when it's going to happen, and all kinds of things. And it's funny to me, because I'm on the steering committee, and these aren't answers that we have yet, a lot of them. So that's exactly what they are, they're rumors. If you have questions, I mean, Peter's on the committee, I'm on the committee, so you can ask the committee to make a presentation to you before the time, I mean, you can ask that at any time, we're planning on doing it anyway, but, but I want to be super clear that the recommendation from the building committee was only partially based on enrollment numbers. And it was, that was like 1/3 of, of the reasons why we came up with the recommendation that we came up with. I mean, I'll just say it real quickly, the other reasons are diverse, the, the, the expansion of programming needs, and how those have become completely different over the past 10, 15 years. And the third reason is the state of our facilities, and the fact that they aren't... And the third reason is the state of our facilities and the fact that they aren't even up to daily code. So, I just want to, I mean, I know that's not the conversation we're having tonight, but it's been mentioned several times. And so I want to be like 1 million percent sure that you know-
BOE one, town council one.
That we're not saying, look at our enrollment number, we have to build a new school. Like, that's not what's happening. That is just one reason.
Okay.
And I also, thirdly, want to say-
Or fourthly.
No, that's the third reason. I thirdly want to say that I think, you know, I, I, Alicia, you can call the, the numbers accurate and they, and if you, and if you, if by accurate you mean that they have been on, on target, then that's true. You can say that you shouldn't do that, I brought a projection, but the fact is that we have to have enrollment projections. Whether they're accurate or not is some type of tool that we need to use knowing limitations of a projection. So I just want to be, like, put that out there too. It's not like you can just say, oh, well, forget it, we won't project anything because projections aren't, you know, that's just a projection, and there might be a 5% deviance, or whatever it may be.
So-
Your turn, Paul.
Oh, thanks, Hillary. I'm gonna shift the conversation a little bit about another observation that I made about, uh, what's her, what's her name? Rebecca's study, I'm sorry. And, which, and, and a lot, something that came to light to me today is, what we know about the Downs is the Downs has to operate within the 135 growth permits, not the reserve. So they have to operate under the 135 growth permits that are allocated January 1st every single year. So my question is, why is the Downs even in the enrollment conversation when they are actually baked into the assumptions that have been going on since 2008? So I want everybody to think about that, because Rebecca didn't include the Downs, and I actually think rightfully so. She did not, because they are held to the 135 growth permits.
She did include the Downs.
Yeah, that, because it's embedded.
It's embedded.
So if we're gonna, if we're gonna, I think this is a serious conversation that I think, I think we all gonna think about, because unless I'm mistaken, the Downs is not allowed to be treated as a separate entity in a, in reason for a new school.
Have I missed something that came up, or did?
Yeah, the Downs, so the Downs can only, they're only-
No, 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 I understand that. Why are you using it? Yeah, was there something that-
No, I'm not accusing anybody. I'm just saying, I mean, I would-
Something you learned.
Yeah, it's something I learned tonight. And that, whoa, whoa, hey, whoa. No, I'm saying, no, no, I just, I just found that really intriguing. Like, you know, we all, I mean, the Downs is something that is driving a lot of conversations, but it strikes me that the Downs actually shouldn't be in the conversation of school. Like, if we're gonna adopt Rebecca's model, the Downs can't be in the conversation.
Doesn't it, again, you know, what conversation does Dr. Model as a reference point? It doesn't sound like we'd agree.
No, that's not true. I'm just, yeah.
Have we agreed to that?
No, I don't, I, I think we're on the same page.
I think we're on the same page, of course. Absolutely. But I'm not gonna lie to something like that right now.
Peter?
Yeah, I think, taking this, I'm not sure where this, whether this is in bounds or out of bounds.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah. I'll tell her, I'll tell her.
But I'm sitting here struggling, if we're having this much difficulty understanding what we're talking about, what we have to think about is, we have to get the public comfortable.
Yeah, that's fair.
And so-
But that's what this is, the first step.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, so this is a great starting point, saying, even if we're having some struggles about what numbers to use, folks out there are gonna also have the same struggles. So I think part of the conversation should be, what do we do to be able to convey a message? And I just wanted to clarify what I said, it wasn't a high-low model of what she presented. It was really just a risk core. There are a lot of, and, and like she's doing year-to-year projections, we're looking 30 years down the road where it's gonna be. So, I mean, birth rates can change, the economy can change. I just think, I was trying to say, in the macro piece, when we put in front of us how big the school is, what we need, there's probably gonna be some conversations about ranges of heights. But, but I'm just, I think, as we have these conversations, it's a real tension point for us. If we're having this much difficulty arriving at a comfort zone, what do we do? I think it's a great, I think it'll work. Yeah, that's it.
Well, and I think the, you know, to Ken's point, I think that, and to Hillary's point, I think the fractionalization is huge, and the Downs is in the fractionalization, right? Because they don't, they don't have to use a whole unit to get to the 135 or whatever, and then I guess they get more than 20% allocation Jason at the end, or, or something like that. So I think, you know-
Yeah, but that's the same logic that's applied to the 135, no matter how you're looking at it.
Right, yeah, so, now, speaking of the Downs, I'm just saying the two-thirds, right?
Yeah, sure.
So the two-thirds, the one-half, um, you know, why isn't the two-thirds, three-quarters, you know? So, I mean, I think that's gonna be a major issue going forward, um, because, you know, the, the impact on the school, uh, it looked like for the 1, 2, and 3 veterans was about a .6, somewhere between, somewhere between a .43 and a .67, depending on what it was, but there was a higher impact of the 1, 2, and 3 veterans than the complexes with just 1 and 2 veterans. So I think that it, it sounded like potentially there was an agreement between Rebecca and Jay to kind of maybe drive down a little deeper on certain data. And I would see that hopefully as an action coming out of here, um, because I think everyone's a little bit nervous on that front. And the only reason I'm including the Downs is just to say, they're really a lot of multi-vanilla housing, and so that's, the two-thirds is gonna be a factor in that, as it is with the ones that are coming out of the pool.
Sure.
Well, i- i- it strikes me that if we're talking about enrollment and growth as one of the primary factors on this new school, frankly, and there are other reasons why the, the, the new school is being considered, maybe we should try to work towards educating ourselves about those other factors as well, rather than just, you know, focusing only on the enrollment numbers.
And so let's try to wrap this up, and I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna go back to Nick's comment. He, what we could agree on is that this is not an enrollment conversation, it's a four-pronged conversation. I, that's which, enrollment, birth rates, condition of facilities, and?
Yeah, you actually bring up a lot.
Birth rate, migration of students, turnover of existing housing, building of new.
I think it's Hillary's that was-
So we could agree, we could agree that we-
I think you're mixing up the ideas.
Okay, well, can we agree that we try to keep our conversation about this project, the school, focused solely on those issues? That could be where we reach some agreement.
I think Peter has a good point about macro, economic conditions as well.
So we could, we could sprinkle in that, in macro, macro value for Hillary.
Wait, before we move on to clarify that-
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, the, the things Nick was talking about were specific to enrollment. And then what I was talking about, for the reasons for the school, enrollment was only one piece of it.
That's fair. Yeah, okay, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. I, I can play.
So can we agree that that's what our conversation is?
I mean, I think, I just think maybe it just helped the conversation if we, if we realize those are the decision points. If we could just agree on that, then we can, we can have all the debate we want about enrollment, or we could have debate we want about the conditions of the school. But at least it keeps us speaking, having honest debates about really what the crux of this decision is. I'll throw that out there, in an attempt to wrap this up in five minutes.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so we're gonna wrap this up in five minutes, so let's all say our last piece and-
I don't think there's anyone sitting around this table who is opposed to looking at and probably building some sort of new school facility, whatever that may be. Um, I think the issue for, and, and I, I'm gonna talk to the council, and maybe I'm not totally with the council. The issue is the timing. That's the only issue that I know I've got, or with most people that I've talked to, um, on the council, is the timing. So I'm just gonna leave that out there. So that's one more factor that, you know, we need to look at, is now the right time or not? And if not, when?
I think that's, um, just a popular model. Part of our last section is to get together in, three in the another meeting to talk about priorities. Because we've got lots of initiatives here on the table. We need to decide what is the right time and right-
Exactly.
Well, I'd like to work that in, though, it would be other, I mean, because in order to answer that question for you, I think you need to know, what, what, what does it look like when I go into the school? How safe is it? What are the safety concerns, right? And then that will help you decide, drive your, your timing decision.
Well, yeah, no.
Well, well, I mean, if you go, if you go to the school and you determine it's completely unsafe and inadequate for programming-
Well, my daughter went through the old Wentworth School, so I went through that, but yeah, I mean, you know.
Right, I mean, but, but, I mean, you need to see that and get that information, not only the enrollment, information to, to, to address the timing.
Right, but our job as counselors also is maintaining tax stability in town, and the financial scheduling, the capital improvements. So that's gonna be huge with us.
But how do you, how do you weigh the schools with the other, with the other priorities?
Actually, we're gonna talk about the next thing.
If you don't, if, if you don't have all of the data, my point is if we're only looking at enrollment as this, as this body, and not the other drivers of the need for the school, then how do you make as a council, I think that-
I sat through this in 2017, which talked about all of that.
And things are, and things are worse. And so it's not for you to know what the standard is today.
But that means not the total factor driving what I would approve right now.
Well, we're not asking for the right-
Yes, okay, I'm gonna end this section, this section of the meeting's officially over.
Do you want to do any recap?
Yeah, Sarah, you are the queen of recapping. Recap and then-
We can literally agree on one thing.
Really?
Which was multiple factors, multiple factors to consider when discussing enrollment figures, birth rate, migration of students, turnover of existing housing, and building of new housing.
And that would help me with the Beacon, because-
Well, no, it, it's more of a, right.
And you guys have an action to, to tell to reconsider the fractionalization.
Yeah, the Council Johnson made a reference to it, but I don't think, I don't think we need to make a start point that this council is committed to a full review of growth management ordinance. So that should be a subject, obviously, of discussion.
And that started in the 20th?
As well, no, the whole ordinance, from the back, so that, that's the conversation that's gonna be going on.
And that's, I mean, hopefully, this helped us with that conversation. Like, on the side, like, we're doing this with you guys to help inform the ordinance committees to do this.
And should move on to forth.
Yeah.
The decisions we make on that ordinance will impact school, there should be some consideration.
So that's something we agree on.
Okay. I was gonna say it later, but, um, I don't think we have to agree on all the terms of this stuff, because, I mean, I, I think, we have, from my perspective, I mean, nothing's come before us from the school board, for a school, it's nothing on our- plan to have a different thing. So I don't have an opinion, although in general I support the group's school facilities. So, um, when you're ready to bring it forward, bring all your ammo. You know, the conditions, the timing, how much it's gonna cost, and then we can actually start to discuss it and debate it.
I think that's the problem, though, that I have the comments, uh, to the timings. How can you possibly know what, have an opinion on the timing when you don't even have all the information? And so you're jumping ahead and saying that you have a problem with timing, we haven't even suggested the timing.
So this is our commitment to you, we will not speak to the timing publicly until you bring something forward.
I haven't seen anything.
Is, do, is everybody okay with that?
Right, the back point, we, we can't, you can't, we can't keep saying publicly, I'm not going to approve a new school on the November ballot, which has been said before.
Well, I, I-
They have a privacy, it doesn't, the school doesn't exist to us. It doesn't exist to us.
Yeah, but we had a counselor come to our meeting saying she would not approve a new-
No, I know.
November ballot. Yes, she did.
Yes, you did, but it was in public.
They were like, yeah, you're right, I mean, that's true. I would say that.
What I'm saying is, we can give our, we can give our opinions about your school all day long, but we're, what we're not going to do is we won't discuss the timing. Because as far as we're concerned, we're concerned with a community center, WEX, a turf field, and everything else. You guys, like, I just joke around, like, John, right? As far as we are concerned, the school isn't in existence in our world yet. So we're, it's not fair of us to discuss the timing of the school if it's not in there.
Can I just clarify something, John? So, I mean, the community center is not a capital improvement, either.
Yeah, right now it's not a capital improvement.
Okay, but I just want to be clear, like, that that's not, like, or-
It's not a capital improvement, and that's the only reason for it. Right, and for my control.
Why?
John, you did not like what I said about?
I know, I'm fine with where we are right now. I just want to remind everybody that, uh, there's a difference between questioning and debunking. They, debunking means exposing the sham, okay? So my questions were not in an attempt to debunk anything. They're purely to try to understand some current state of where we are with things, and I got off the agenda on that, but also to try to ask the basis for some assumptions, including not counting, um, one bedroom apartments.
Yep.
So, I, we just go back to the point about if we're, you know, what can we agree on, if we, you know, you know, that kind of thing. You know, we're focused on trying to establish some broad agreement. We have a lot of rough road ahead, and I think that, uh, Councilor Carolyn Johnson said correctly that, uh, this is really not the force now, number one, but number two, it is going to be coming, you know, into the picture at some point, and there are many large other issues that are gonna have similar pressure on capital planning as opposed to financial, so it'll be in budget season in a matter of days. So, uh, you know, we, we have a lot of work ahead, and I think that we need to be comfortable with questioning. And if you don't attend our meetings, I'd be happy to give you a recap and bring you up to speed. Um, and I get to, to, as we don't want, I don't watch all the tapes and don't attend all of your meetings, but that doesn't mean they're not important to me, and they're not something that I will limit up and get educated on. So, I mean, I think this is a good start. I, I think that we had a good discussion, and I just think that we need to get, get more comfortable with difficult questions, because those are the questions we're getting from the public. And that, we, you know, we ran to try to answer those, and that's what I'm trying to be a tone to, so.
And when I say I don't support, I wouldn't support the school on the November ballot, yeah, that's true. I'm saying that right now is the way it is right now for me, because I haven't heard any differently. And I know that I, I don't have anything other than what, some of what we've been given here today, what's been out there in the newspaper, and whatever. Um, and if I'm feeling that way, because I'm a huge school person, school supporter, and I'm a former teacher myself.
Are you a real estate broker?
Which I am. That is today.
Just teasing him, just lighting, lighting up.
Jesus, Johnson. But that being said, it's like convinced me, which is, because if you have to convince, because if you convince me, maybe you'll convince the public, but right now-
I mean, in fairness, Leeann, as Chair of the DOE, you did, at a meeting, said it would, it'd be quote inconscion- incon- incon-
Uncon-
Unconscionable for you guys not to hit us on the ballot November.
I said it'd be unconscionable.
You're right, so, so in all fairness to the DOE, that was a pretty strong signal to the town council. So although you haven't brought it forward to us-
And out of respect, we have agreed that we would have that conversation with a broader group of folks, because not everybody has a stake in what the priorities are sitting here today. We need to have that conversation as a town.
They were very clearly stated at the chair. So they're not rumors, they were stated publicly at a public meeting by your chair. So, yeah. Well, you said that there's rumors about the timing, but they're not rumors, it was, it was-
Do I just, I just think there's rumors flying around about everything.
Sure.
Yeah, but that's what we're trying to-
Where it's gonna be, I mean, I've heard everything.
Do you, do we make some-
Do you know a new school's gonna be building Downs? I mean, that's not even like-
Well, not wrong, yeah, they may say it.
I'm just saying, like, these are the rumors I hear, that we as a building steering committee have these doubts. I didn't mean specific to that, I just meant like, random.
Okay, well, you get the last word, and then we're done, because this is getting overdone.
Okay, so to build on something that Don said, and to circle back on how we started this segment. This, we all attribute this as a learning opportunity, we're, when our both bodies together to workshop these big ideas. So if every single one of us comes away from today agreeing or not agreeing, like, we've all been presented now the same information. So when we talk about laying the foundation so that in the future, when the school board comes forward and says, enrollment was a factor in our decision-making, the, the town council isn't going to vote on enrollment. We think it's enrollment. We, we've now covered that base. And so for me, this is a good foundation, we don't have to agree, but we've all been presented the same information, we've had some good discussion. And so now it's moving forward, what's the next thing that we will need to workshop in order to bring the town council along with us as for to continue to make sure that we're all having the same conversation? And, and I don't think that this will come through on it. So I hope that people aren't-
The last 20 minutes of our meeting is gonna get a little crazy, that's pretty normal, there's 20 of us around the table, right? So, we'll move on. Next one?
We're gonna talk about eight quarters?
Yep, we're ready.
All right.
Everybody's feeling warm and buzzing?
We can skip it if you guys just want to move it down.
You gotta, all along.
So we're Kate and Todd, we're talking about what was going on with eight corners and provide an update on the water.
He lost her voice earlier, so I was gonna do a little talking, and then when he gets it wrong, I'll just like nudge him a little bit. I can talk crazy, very.
Yeah.
You're wincing.
Oh, I just, I know.
It doesn't hurt, it just sounds funny. Okay.
So for those, I haven't met, I haven't met a couple of council members, so I'm Todd Jefferson, I'm the School Facilities Director, and I got to assemble the lovely modulators that are at Eight Corners and take care of all the school facilities in the district. So the eight corners, while Kate's clicking, the challenge with putting in modulators is frankly a timeline. As many of you who were part of the conversation last spring know, we came to the council asking for some emergency funding, if you will, at a late time, in order to get classrooms available for this year. At that time, we had not had any approval for funding, so it was very difficult to go out and get pricing, we didn't have a plan, we just knew we needed them. So it's very difficult to ask subcontractors to come out and give you hard numbers when they don't even have a building or a plan to look at. And we weren't in a place to give them that information until we had approval for funding for such a project. So we were approved for funding using impact fees. I was put in an uncomfortable position to give a ballpark cost that's up there at $260,000. All I had was the cost of the actual building at that point.
Sorry, you'll make the guy have to do this, this time.
Which was, the building itself was $160,000, and it's two classrooms in a hallway, classrooms each have bathrooms and everything. What we didn't know at that time was the requirements to put those into effect. One of them was state param martial permitting required us to bring in a new sprinkler line. We couldn't just extend the system of existing portables. The other thing, after we got planned border approval for the site, I was instructed to consult with the sanitary district for the sewer connections, which I did. And when I did that, I found out that the sins of my predecessor were revealed, and that the six existing modular classrooms that were there had never been permitted with the sanitary district, so we ended up paying MAC fees since about 2001 for those existing six trailer classrooms.
We don't know who to blame. We have lots of.
Right.
But all Todd knows is it wasn't him.
I wasn't here then. And also, I was talking to Brock at the brief, that when you embark in any project, you are responsible for the sins that exist on the site. And if you run into a sin, you're really obligated to do the right thing, fix it. So there were no pre-existing record drawings for anything except for the brick part of the building. So when we were putting in the new and required sprinkler line, we ran into a power line. We didn't do any major damage, but it caused a slowdown and some extra time for the site crew, which happened to be resbearing, they did an excellent job, he had a great operator, so he didn't rip it all out of the ground, but it did require some extra time and work, handwork, which slowed things down. And then the desired state was to have a connected hallway, if you will, but due to the fire marshal requirements, that would've had to be, you know, sprinkled and heated, and that would've caused way more cost than I was hoping. And so we ended up building an ADA compliant ramp for wheelchair access, and did an on install cover over it instead of a stick-built, heated, sprinkled, much more expensive structure. We also ended up, there's one thing that's not on here, we actually added some, required some extra power that the building didn't have. The good news is, is because I grew up on a potato farm near the county, and I hunkered it, and salvaged the old power hole, the old portables that the old went with, and I still have the greater panels in the hole and everything, so I got to reuse that. So we did achieve some savings somewhere, but ran into a few unexpected items that were more costly.
Kate, just press the next era.
Your work can add to your progression. Nothing is working right, road to some work, like laptops and all that.
The other thing, we did have good site work estimates on, because we added a parking lot to accommodate extra cars, which you require to do when you increase student enrollment and therefore staff enrollment, you have to have enough room for parking. So we did create a 34 car parking lot addition to the west of the building, and we came in under budget on that, so we were able to achieve a $3,000 surplus there. But some of those overages, we arrived at about a $64,000 deficit. We were able, through some C I P funds that existed, to charge the project costs for furnishings and equipment to existing C I P budget line items, and so the final project deficit, and Kate's spreadsheet, you print, she's amazing at it, is the $50,000 cost.
So I'm gonna jump in with trying to always talk about this part of the budget that was the charge, $60,000, including $50,000 for site work, so we had a deficit on the modular side, we had a little savings on the pad, the asphalt pad, that was our input. So that got us to the $64,000. And the furnishings, switches and equipment, I was using F I twenty again, I don't know if it's F I twenty. That was actually part that we had satisfied specifically for furnishing and outfitting the modular, but it was a separate part of the budget, it was in our moving equipment or furnishings line, in our capital budget. So what we did was we pulled back on that a little bit, a lot of our guys did the work instead of us having a construction company come in and build cubbies and shelving units and the kinds of things that you need to put kids into a classroom. We bought some modular units, we bought less expensive units, and our guys did a lot of work on that. So the savings that we were able to recruit in that line, which was also specifically targeted for this project, in a separate place, we applied that to the overage that we were having in the replacement and outfitting of the modulars. So this final deficit is the amount that we're currently over budget on the project as a whole from the impact fees that we received from the town council back in, sorry, Kate. I think I might have like three more words, so.
So I think the reason there's overside, you guys are having that.
Oh, I just get this.
So the reason why we're sharing this with you guys, obviously, which I think you already know, is because it's our request that those, that the overage is funded from the impact fees. So we've established with the prior board last year that this project is an appropriate use of that account into the ordinance, which is up there. We were asked by the finance committee in December to investigate if you guys say no, are there, is there another way we can fund this within our existing budget? The short answer to that is yes, but we would be doing so by taking money out of places that we've already, that we've budgeted for other things. So there would certainly be an impact to that. And we believe that it would be more responsible than to do, to take that money from an account that has sufficient funding for a project, especially being approved for use of that account. And I think, I know that you guys generally use the impact fee fund to pay down debt service, based on the last numbers that Tom provided us, you could still maintain the schedule of paying down debt service with that account and from the overage.
Just a quick question, as we think about this, which were modulators that are already in the, also in the budget, I think for this budget cycle, we had two additional modulators that didn't have the same issue with those, so we should maybe be considering how we're going to fund both of those issues?
We wouldn't be looking for additional funding in impact fees because we have enough room in what we've budgeted for C I P in this year to purchase the additional modulars?
Well, just the building. You still have fit up costs that we now have accurate.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I think, so what's in the, I thought what was in the budget was just the cost of the modulars, not the fit up cost.
Correct.
So I'm asking, are we inspecting another $60,000 shortfall in this year's budget?
Not if we budget accurately in FY '21, which is, is kind of a miracle. Because the modulars won't come until the summer time, so the outfitting costs can be budgeted for accurately if there's additional costs in FY '21. The reason that we needed money for the modulars in FY '22 ordering the buildings was because we need to order them now in order to have them delivered for the summer.
So you're, so you're saying you're gonna put the fit up cost, if you will, within the budget capital.
For the budget reflection. Exactly. And far more accurately.
Taken into consideration, and so for the FY '21 budget, we will budget an increase in our C I P.
It's, it will be far more accurate, and it would be less than what we've done here because it's the second half of a building. But you're absolutely right, I think, you know, we could say, oh, well, let's also think about what's coming forward. But I think our plan was to, because we have time and we're not in a crunch to find that money the way that we were a year ago this time.
I just didn't want to.
We could do it plan through the budget process and do it somewhat more appropriately.
Thank you.
Great point, John.
Do we have any students in?
Yes.
Yes.
At Eight Corners.
They're all.
They're being.
So I was disappointed enough to see they haven't even walked away. I thought that was, would've been nice for kids to be safe. It can be that we have. Is that meant for commercial use in the school? So has.
Yeah, they use it in schools in better ones, the one they use in Durham and, yeah, it's durable. It's not going anywhere.
It's a tough thing, but the one thing that we didn't do, John, I'm glad you put that up, is that it's got a cover right now, it's fitted for sides, they weren't able to put the sides on because of the weather by the time we got it done. So there's a question of expansion and how are they connected, and I don't know all the details, but we are gonna put sides on it ultimately, and we'll find money to do that in our operating budget. That's something that would make it whole, we could get a little more enclosed, I see.
And I don't know if this, I mean, just to give you an idea, so originally those two were gonna be classrooms, but because they're now not connected, they have to tag in and to get them, they actually ended up moving the, some of the specialty classrooms out there where kids are all, are probably gonna be escorted by adults anyway, and taking the classroom space and putting them, do you see what I'm saying? They swapped.
Like art, music, or?
Not art and music, but like reading or rubbery.
Next year, music will be out.
Yes, probably. But my point was originally, they, just for your information, I just thought it was interesting, they were gonna be used as classrooms because at the time, they thought there would be a covered walkway and there wouldn't need to be a key entry. But because, for safety, because there's not a covered walkway, we wanted to make sure there was still a key entry, and having kids going back and forth through key entries without a door was kind of apparent and unsafe. So they switched the uses around.
Just a general question, probably a moot point, but for lessons, there was no vetting, no planning, engineering, review of this project at all before it took off? I mean, I would've found the deficiencies and arrears payments to the sanitation district, the parking lot did not be big enough, how did all that happen?
We did have a site engineer engineer the site, and we did dig safe it, but unfortunately the town, because it's a private, it's a, DigSafe is a private company, they don't keep track of what everyone does unless you report it to them, and that wasn't reported in 2000 and whatever it was that that line was put in. So that was a minor oversight, but, yes.
But it was more towards, I think, our town's engineering department, I was just wondering how a project like this comes into the town, get funded by the council, not get better through a standard planning.
It did go through the planning board. Yeah, it did go through the planning board.
But because it's temporary, there wasn't the same review as.
Just to speak to something that Ken said, because I don't wanna complete two different projects, Kate did show and had a slide of the parking lot where we were able to save, that was a separate C I P project. So that was not like, oh, we put this portable and then we realized we needed a parking lot. The parking lot was in development.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was a wholly separate project, but we just happened to.
There was a little bit of extra money left, so we applied that extra money to some of the shortfall in the.
And I, I think I would go back to what Todd said earlier, is that any shortcomings in the process were really due to the aggressive timeline. We got them reported in January, we had a chance to review it really quickly, and we basically said, oh my lord, we're gonna have all these children arriving, where are we ready to put them? And now that we're all having these big conversations and that we're all on board with all of these things, I don't see that kind of thing happening again, because we can be planful on a longer timetable.
We also know, we hadn't done modulars since 2008, that was the last two that ever went on in the district, and the modulars have actually changed. They don't build them in Oxford anymore, so you can't go up and look at them being built. They're actually built in Georgia and put on a trailer and driven all the way clear up here, and they're different. Framing's different, so much about them is different. So we didn't really know what we didn't know, other than looking at the plans they gave us, I gave that to my fit up contractors, but again, when they get there, they get it, so.
So Leanne, you sent out a spreadsheet, I don't have it in front of me, but there was a big line item, so you answered one of my questions from this white spreadsheet, like, $5,000 grand for this, what the heck? So you answered why that was. But there was, I think, like a $30,000 approximately line item for tech, and it doesn't sound like, like, so you're not quite using them for classrooms, so.
Do they not have classrooms, they're just not home rooms?
So you had to put all that tech in and.
Yeah, they still use all of that, it's just not a home room classroom, it's still a classroom that needs all this technology.
I think, John, you had started talking and then kind of stopped partway.
Did I?
You did. Do you wanna finish what you were saying?
I can finish.
Do you know what?
Oh, okay, yeah, so to your point then, and when the project was coming up, I was a little bit vocal about it last year, and not in favor, because, for many reasons, but the planning review is different for, like, these are temporary. So I think we just had a site plan review which had on the site plan where it might go, but there was no architect or engineer that stamped a plan, as far as I know, that was reviewed by a planning.
Goro Palmer is the site engineer, they stamped the engineered plan for the, for the site plan for both the parking lot, separate project, and the pad on which the modulars sit. So they, and they are the ones that presented our project to the planning board the first time, and the initial proposal was to put two off the end of the existing ones. And then when we realized that we're gonna need two more and there's not room, we changed the location, so we went back to the planning board for a second visit to say, we revised our plan because we need two extra and there's not room on that end, so that's how they got put there. And I'm with you, I'm not in favor of these things either, they're a pain in the neck.
Necessary evil.
Necessary evil.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think earlier, as I said, we know about learnings of what we learned in things like, I think Counselor Johnson's comments are good ones, not only on this for the modulars around the estimates, but it certainly was kind of an issue too for the turf field, where we put a placeholder remaining to the budget and came in and made it sit. That perception with those folks out there that were trying to get on board, so I think it is, a learning would be just, you probably could adjust some cushions in these numbers or.
Yeah, I've asked for a contingency this year.
Contingency.
Because you don't know what's under.
I mean, it's just, just a learning of, that doesn't, but in these types of things, if we're not certain of the numbers.
No questions.
We should just make that clear.
I agree, I agree too, but it's kind of a difficult thing on the, because you're trying to be physically responsible and, you know, we're getting the tough questions and, you know, the, this balance of wanting to be right, trying to predict it and be accurate, and.
We will be much more accurate this year now that we know what they are and what arrives.
But it's hard, you know?
And this was a target of this, it was those just in general, we're better off, you know, a little conservative, or at least put this claim as much.
I'll recommend.
And what, so what.
And what, so what have we at for, for modulars within these, within these couple of years? How many modulars?
So we have two last year that we installed that are in use, and we'll have two at Pleasant Hill and two at Corners upcoming this fiscal year.
So when we talk about the timing of the schools, you know, that's six modulars at three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred fifty, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, you know, and that, that's pretty significant.
So the only other hesitation that I have is the funding source. And I don't know how deep you guys got into it the last time, but when I read our impact piece ordinance, the school piece, I was, this is kind of the part that overlays all of our impact fees, but the school piece is pretty explicit in that it says that those funds are going to be used for capital improvement projects that were listed on, uh, some submission in the D O E years ago. So it's always gonna use your debt service, so I, I don't doubt the debt service is gonna be reused. The concern I have here is this isn't a capital improvement, because it's temporary, it's not, it's not a permanent structure, um, and state law requires you to use the impact fees to the purpose for which they're brought. So I don't know if, you guys have had an attorney pining on it, or if it was just a council kind of action at the last meeting, but that's, that's where my hesitation is. You could use impact fees to pay down debt and take that to pay this, so it's more of a technical issue, I.
I would love to have an opportunity to talk to the attorney about that, specifically looking at the middle school for those temporary buildings that have been there for twenty years.
Those are on foundation though.
Um, is there a difference between that and?
Those are modular buildings, these are portable, so that, that's another nuance that I can jump up on is.
There is nothing portable about these two.
No, I know, but technically they are, trust me.
Technically they're mobile.
I, I hear what you're saying, it's just, it is nuanced to it, they're not gonna go away in six months. I mean, these are gonna be a long term, it's a long term investment to solve a true need where we don't have the space to build on more building.
So I'm just looking for somebody smarter than me to tell me that.
Tell me if you check.
I recall that we had a review, I think everyone, there was a rich full discussion regarding this language, and I think there was general agreement that of all projects that it fit, it did that, so I don't recall formally putting it in.
Only thing I can recall that we talked about was updating the language and the ordinance to reflect the fact that we had gone out and done a new proposal to the Department of Education and that, you know, it shouldn't be tied to something that's all those years ago, it should be tied to the current, current reality. So I didn't, I didn't feel there was a lot to talk about whether it was appropriate or not, it was just, it wasn't matching the use of the.
I mean, definitely isn't the objective, right? The final comp, the final point here is when those projects identified that section had been completed, global bond, the town council should have made this ordinance or appeal it.
There's a little nuance that says you could use it until the debt service is retired?
Right.
Oh. Oh, you got it.
And I, I'll, I'll tell you that, that they're not my favorite things for schools, I don't think they're an adequate permanent solution for classrooms, but they're not dumb peeps. And I invite you to come over and I'll show you through the existing ones, even the old ones. My son goes to King Middle School, and all of our portables are, you know, in the same wheelhouse as King Middle School, so, I mean, it just, it's all relative. It's what you deem of good value, and so I'm not saying that our portables are awesome, because they're not. They're aging and old and they take a lot of work, but they're not dumb. Just my opinion. We try hard to keep them habitable, because we know we're living with them for twenty years.
Questions?
No, no, that's, we're gonna come back and mull it over. We can talk about it and mull it over, this is just an update. Unless, you guys wanna take action? Really get this? Really get this? I was thinking, John's questioning, I don't know, whether we can handle legal, quick legal opinion, if you can have this back, or.
That ship's already sailed.
Well, yeah, well, just, once we've got it placed, you know, so, I mean, this will be funny, I think this is.
It's an accounting issue, right?
It's gonna cost you more in the lawyer fees than we'll just.
I like your style.
If I'm a developer.
Can you get a soft yes if the legal opinion comes back?
You can get a, let's move on, then I can get it, all right? John can dissect the ordinance later, that's all we're here for.
If I'm a contractor intended to pay three, two hundred bucks a unit to pay this fee, I'm gonna be angry that we're using it for portable, because it's supposed to be used for something that's the same quality as the rest of the schools. And the way the state law is written is if you're not using it for what you said you were gonna use it for, you're supposed to refund it. And that's why I think it's important to understand that nuance, and I don't think it's too late, because the way I've read the annual statement, they kind of didn't explicitly say, oh, use it for.
I cannot imagine Counselor Bucci being an angry man, you so deranged of a general support. I cannot imagine.
I'm not a developer.
Yeah, but if you were.
So let me go to the next discussion point. We'd like to discuss, um, everyone's favorite discussion, the turf and track, um, and what a proposed approach may be, as well as the schedule for getting this back in front of as a referendum to the town.
Hey, um, do one of you guys want to do a mirror and turf on these? I thought.
So it's true. Where's the tap?
No, this is the one David you raised, the.
Oh, here's the error that Mr. Nod.
Hey, where, this is, this is, I think I'm gonna do one hand over top.
John, what do you guys think? What do you guys think? What do you guys think of that?
I've, I've read the report, I wonder if you guys are gonna take that one.
That's the chair.
And you have to wait until it's back for us, so you have to wait until it's out.
And you should be trying, let me talk to you, I'm gonna introduce you to that, that's good. So the, as we all know, we put the turf tech project of the voters last November, it was unsuccessful. Uh, the problems have not gone away. This is an issue that's been much more impactful to the school system given their use and their reliance on that facility. Our summer programs for community services are affecting some of them, they locate that, so this is, I wanna make it a school problem, but it really impacted your operations. So my staff has worked closely with Mike McGage and his staff to understand those impacts are. Mike went so far as to make some temporary arrangements to relocate spring sports, he's since retracted those, and so at this point in time, he is planning on having that field in fact usable, playable for the spring season. To do so, we have done, they call it a T-Shock test, which is essentially a safety test to make sure that it's providing the proper cushioning, if you will, I forgot the technical term. Uh, but what's, uh, the undeniable fact is that we are worn so much on the, the actual turf itself that we're down to the backing and the fabric, and that is a real problem. Uh, and that's not gonna go away until we replace it. The other challenge we have with the system, really given its age and how it's installed, all the lines are actually cut in as opposed to being inlaid from the manufacturer, so we, we have lots of seams, and often when a seam opens, you're not quite sure how extensive that is. So, long story short, we'll be, I'll be coming back to the council and proposing to use some reserve funds to make that field playable for the spring, uh, waiting for the snow and ice to get off the field to kind of do a full assessment of that. The same would be true for the track, there are areas that are potentially peeling up, uh, we can make temporary patches and make it usable. I think Mike said we'll have one, maybe two home track meets scheduled, so he's very mindful of this. Uh, but the issue really becomes is how do we move this forward? The problem doesn't go away, it's only gonna get worse, frankly. And so perhaps against my better judgment, Sandy and I had conferred with our staff, they come up with just a different way to move this forward, and one suggestion we'd like to bring forward tonight is to separate the projects, is to do the turf first, and that's really based on the premise that that's the most immediate attention. Uh, as an aside, I'll just cheer that Mike McGage has said, though he may be able to relocate spring sports because of the nature of them and other facilities, fall sports is simply not a possibility. There's not a place for him to move football and soccer to, and I can only imagine how the community would react. And so part of the, big part of the motivation is to replace at least the turf portion in time for fall use, it's fall twenty twenty. So one suggestion we have is to separate the two, to bring the turf project itself to the voters at the June referendum. And I have a, what I think now is a low estimate, and Counselor Hayes, your point's well taken. Um, I put that number up for conversation points, I think it's probably six hundred, six fifty, but I will give a better number, but I wanted to just kind of frame the conversation tonight. So again, we're picking the turf because of the urgency of repair, um, it's gonna be less overall cost, and perhaps the voters will receive that better. Uh, it also could be completed in a five to seven week timeframe, so assuming we get approval in June, the work could be accomplished before, preseason and early August, I think it was. Uh, and in the meantime, I think there's the conversation around personal corporate sponsorship, and that's something that I think we really need to do, that's part of the conversation the next time we go up to the voters. The other parts of this project would require us to do April repairs, again, that's what we refer to, both for track and turf, and that would be in the next month, six weeks at most. And then, of course, we've had the track component of the project that would have to be considered. I just put up November, you know, that may not be the right timeline, but again, that problem will not go away. Uh, and it's certainly not the best way to do a project, uh, you can't, done the mobilization, it's not the most cost effective and efficient, uh, but I think by essentially doing all the work within the track area, which is the turf, uh, the track will never be done after the patch, we don't do any damage. So that's a suggestion for discussion.
So are you, are you saying this is an alternative proposal, like, to, to get it
passed, or be, or for the timing of the sports?
Uh, perhaps both.
Okay, but is there still an opportunity to put, just put it all on the June referendum?
There is, I don't think we have the turf playable. A combined project takes much longer to complete, so I don't think the turf would be playable for fall in that scenario. So you would effectively wait to do that a full year.
Okay. Does the corporate sponsorship, um, if we got that, would we, would our amount still be, does, does the five hundred thousand dollars include the corporate sponsorship?
It does not.
So anything of that would be finished on?
Correct.
And just a point over to that, Tom and I discussed this, if a corporate sponsorship put this below the four hundred thousand dollar threshold, we would still put it through the line.
Okay, but I thought the one corporate sponsor that we were pursuing said.
They did, but there's not a corporate people in the world.
Yeah, it would not be the formal request, but the, the team that are completing, I think it's gonna be challenged against.
Tom, I wanted to thank you and Sandy for reframing this issue. I did wanna try to, to, to accept with the ballot referendum, I recall it was one point two million, was that bigger?
Well, we were at the first one point six, but one point two was what my, I think we were in similar resolve, it was one six.
Remember, I voted for the higher numbers.
I remember that too. But, um, can you help us, you know, what I'm trying to get at here is, I like the reframing, but I don't know how much I like it, and I don't wanna speak to voters, but if it comes back again at one point two or more, um, I'm, I'm really wondering, you know, how it's gonna look, so can you help to, you know, give us an equivalent here, or do you expect this proposal to be all in compared to one point two million?
I, I can't, all I can say is the project, the, the problem doesn't go away, it only gets more expensive, and it's, it's that simple, so. Shouldn't be weird if you like, I'm here telling you, we're gonna need, this is the cost, and you can take it for what it is, we're not making those up, and, and I'm sorry to be so frank, like it's late and tired, but.
So it's late and I know it's tired, but, so one, so you're saying, if we, if one point two were on the ballot again, in some, you know, some upcoming, uh, vote in June or November, would that, would that be sufficient?
I think so. But we're, we're talking about only putting up about six hundred to the voters.
Yeah.
To only do the turf.
Yeah.
And kick the can on track.
Right.
But Tom said, if you knew that, the total, if it was gonna be one point two, aggregate, it'll now be more than one point. Let's call one point eight. So that doesn't make any sense to me from a.
No, but the thing I'm really struggling with is that, so there's, there's a couple messages here, one was that the voters didn't like it, okay, they're telling us that, so, and we don't literally like the idea of putting the same number up before the voters again, I think that would be a low probability of, of getting, who knows? Um, but I, but if we're, you know, the lesson here is that you should really vote in favor of anything that comes before you, otherwise it's gonna cost you more later. That's, that's a, of the three choices, that's the, that's the lousiest message.
Yeah, I'm just saying that can be bleak at this rate, but I, I agree, that would be a horrible way of packaging this and necessarily get out of the overall. I, I mean, I, I can't, I can't do magic here, this is the project, this is the cost, I, I don't know how to repackage it for any lower price.
That's you then Peter, then Leanne?
So I'll just ask the town, the town mill question, is there another turf field in storage?
No.
I get asked.
Like, roll it up like an area one?
No, there's a, there's a rumor, there's a rumor of towns, it's the original installer, installed the field, and the markings were all wrong on, so he had to rip it up. That's the root, I don't. Well, that's why we're actually all here, we need us all to roll it out.
Let me, let me rephrase that. We're on possession of any replacement turf, so if someone else is, uh.
Where do you find them?
Tom, I have a question. Can we say that?
I gotta tell them, because we're out.
Okay. Can, okay. Yes, you're right. I talked myself out of it.
You know, this is jumping too far ahead, I'm sorry, but, you know, the biggest concern I hear from the voters is why weren't we planning for this? And I just don't see that problem going away by getting the money now and then, you know, ten years from now, the next group of people, probably three of us sitting here, will be getting asked the same questions, you know, so what's the prospect for planning for this? Like, in the other field, um, through maintenance fees or reserve fees or putting something in the budget for it, or?
Yeah, this was discussed, I beg your pardon, you were part of those, uh, the, the plan was, at the inception of this field, there was a reserve account created, and user fees have been charged ever since. The intent was to provide for maintenance, but also ideally have enough money for the replacement when that day came. Uh, the reality is, since inception of this field, every other school in the area has grown on an artificial turf, and so I'll show you the revenue numbers, they have plummeted to the point that we might have, you know, twenty five hundred dollars in, in.
So we have to budget for it if we wanna plan with it, we should, we have to put aside a certain amount in a reserve every year?
We would, that's certainly a way to do it.
And we, yeah, got it, yeah.
That's true.
Peter, and then Leanne, and then John? But I guess maybe, I'm uncomfortable packaging it this way, because I feel the perception from our community's gonna be, it's kind of a bait and switch, you can put a piece of it up now, a piece of it up later, and it's kinda costs more. I would rather, if it'd feel like we need to put it in the ballot, which would be really good if we actually had a corporate sponsor, I think that would, that would be a great message. So I would be in favor of putting up, if we're gonna put it in the ballot, put up the whole amount, um, because I think that, I think we'll be, we'll, I think the perception of putting a piece up on it now and coming back in November, putting another piece on, especially with, we haven't talked about it, especially if there's a bunch of other referendum items on the ballot in November, um, I think, I think we're rolling the dice that that won't be approved, so if, if this is a dire need, uh, I think we're better off trying to package it wherever we need to get it done, sell it for the reasons, but it would be great if we had a corporate sponsor that, that puts some of the money out. Now, I don't, I don't see that as a workable force.
Are jerks up there rolling? We have talked to them.
There's five of us that are happy.
Not yet.
We're already, we're already losing five hundred, we're in the hole of five hundred thousand dollars a year, so I'm pretty sure they're not gonna.
I would say that as far as putting this back on the ballot, it's incumbent upon all of us to do a better job communicating to the community. We really fell down on that, as you told me about.
We're already losing $500,000, we're in a hole of $500,000 a year, so I'm pretty sure they're not going to...
I would say that as far as putting this back on the ballot, it's incumbent upon all of us to do a better job communicating to the community. We really fell down on that, as you told me about. That field was hotness, and for whatever reason, we did not talk about that. Whether it was because we didn't have the right asset, there could be safety concerns as we're putting our football team on there, as our soccer team is playing, maybe we should have, and it might have had a very different story, but with respect to the having to be a lower number, the cost of goods goes up every year. I can't walk into Hannover and pay the same price for milk I gave a year ago. Hell, I can barely pay the same price I paid last. Sorry. But it's true, I mean, prices are going up, and to say that it has to be a lower amount means we're going to do a lesser product for the students. This is safety, this is not a, we just want to have the newest for greatest. There's true issues in that field.
Sandy, can I ask you to answer something definitively? If we do nothing, are all sports on that turf from track and campus?
Oh, yeah.
What I've heard is, we probably have a year or two. Okay, but if you just look at that in perspective, and that was built, it's built for about eight years, and it's 14 years, so we've done very well considering how old it is. I, as a taxpayer, I hate it when people talk about the urgency and the sky's falling, where you have to think about the students down the road.
But does the athletic director currently, right now, have a plan that, we stole all this, that something's getting canceled in the near future? I.e. the fall sports season of...
Well, he did give us a presentation, and I think we would ultimately need a legal opinion on this because...
Well, I just think it's a point of clarity, because I just don't know, so...
Yeah.
I think it was my understanding that we were going to spend some money to do mitigation, and that was going to carry us through this fall.
And that's what we talked about, you know, we had a meeting between Don and I, Sandy, and Leanne and April, and we did plan on saying, okay, well, there's mitigate, let's just mitigate, or what's the cost of mitigation? And right now, those numbers are unclear, because as Tom said, there's snow on the ground, so these people want to look at the seams ripping, and there's snow on the ground. So the number 20 grand was getting kicked around, so I bumped it to 50 because of exactly what Peter said earlier. So we're looking into tens of thousands of dollars of mitigation if we just patch it up.
But we know that can be done. No, it just won't be. We'll find out when they quote it.
Yeah, we'll find out when they quote it, I guess.
Well, have they quoted it?
They haven't, and the two contractors we talked to were unwilling to, because of their screen uncertainty, they don't hold a price. Literally, they come and look at a seam, and it could be 100 feet that needs to be fixed, or it could be 2 feet. And that's going to be, you know, with the age of the system, it does fail like that, catastrophically. Just to be clear, if we are so successful to get full approval in June, just to Peter's point, I don't believe the work would actually be accomplished until the following spring.
Yeah, that was my understanding also.
Including the track. If it were my project, they would do it as soon as they possibly could after school let out. It would work like crazy over the summer to get ready for mid-hours.
Well, Mike was talking, I think that was part of that conversation, with Mike was bringing our spring sports to USM.
Yeah, but we can't do that with fall.
Right. It was easier for him, he wouldn't have to wait till June necessarily. It was easier for him to rearrange his spring schedule than it was the fall schedule. And so that was part of, I think, the bifurcation.
The problem with the June support, you wouldn't get a contractor mobilized for at least two weeks after that, so you're starting almost July 1st, and so just the time of getting the work done is just not there.
And Sandy, Hillary?
But I think for the voters, I think we're not even there, I think, with corporate sponsorship, because I don't think it's necessarily just dummy, because I think we want to understand about the safety, but most people, we vote for things on a ballot, you know, like whether you were for it or against it, you have a giant new public safety building. So this people see as maintenance, what the heck were you doing not getting the maintenance done on this field? I mean, that's the way people are seeing it. So, I mean, I'm just wondering if we should be looking at this as a combination, and some of it goes into a budget somewhere to offset some of this? Hopefully, there's some corporate sponsorship, hopefully, you know, I think the voters have got to believe that this won't happen again, and they just don't see it as the same, even a new fire truck, okay, it's time to do a new fire truck, we're going to bond that. You know, even that, people question sometimes, why aren't we saving for fire trucks? But this is, like, it's a, like, it's no...
I'm going to leave you alone, Peter, I'm not going to say...
No, no question, it's going to need something at some point. So I think we've got to do more to get this through, regardless of what amount that we've put on it, and that needs maybe tightening the belt in some other areas across all the budgets, as well as, I don't think corporate sponsorship is enough, is what I think.
And I was giving Peter a laugh tonight, not you. Hillary, and then John.
I think, so I have two things. One is, I think that when this originally went referendum, like, we as a school board were like updated on the quality of the facility, but we were like told, okay, this is like community services, they're going to, you know, they're the ones who maintain it and pay for it. So I think there was like some, not miscommunication, but like, we were like, okay, and we didn't really, I think my point is that if this goes out again, I feel like I have a better understanding that we are, I think you're saying, being encouraged to use what resources we have to also, you know, like, get this, get the information out. And I think, my second point is that I think that it is true that, you know, I have a daughter who plays a sport, it's the number one sport for concussions, and now I know she's playing on a turf that she's more likely to get a concussion on, and, you know, as a board, it's scary to put that stuff out there, because we don't want to freak parents out and say that their kids are somewhere that's unsafe, but I do think that it would be advantageous to some of these test results that we have. I mean, we should let people know, this isn't a maintenance issue. This field has outlifted its expected lifespan by double, and it's now at the point where we're concerned about it not being safe in the next year.
Well, I want to be absolutely crystal clear, I'll speak for myself, but I hope Sandy would agree with that, if he does, we will not let that field be used if it's unsafe.
I understand that.
The way you're characterizing that, I just want to be clear.
No, I guess I meant that, my point is that it is going to get to a point where it's unsafe if we don't do something, and at that point, we're not going to let kids play on it.
Right, and I'm trying, I'm here tonight trying to avoid the crisis that will happen to this community when there's not a Friday football game.
Just answer that about maintenance. I'm not saying it's what has to be done is maintenance, I'm saying it's inevitable, right? I mean, you know that it was going to happen, because they had a life, had an eight-year life, we're at your 14, but that's where the voters, some of their problems, why don't we be planning ahead for this?
But I think it's been a capital improvement plan for the last five years.
Yeah, it was on the facilities plan in 2016, but...
So we had planned for it.
If it was maintenance, we wouldn't need to go to the voter store. It's because it's a capital improvement, that even if we had a fund set aside that had a million dollars in it, we'd still have to go to the voters and say, can we use this million dollars for this capital improvement?
Why would you say that cordables are not capital, and this is a capital improvement?
It's the definition of capital. That's because they're, so because this is a field, it's attached to the property, that's what considers it capital improvement.
It's not a capital improvement, it's a replacement of existing.
Regardless of...
Well, if you can find a nuance that we don't need to send it to the voters, I'll support it.
Regardless of, a dollar amount requires voter approval. Then we run that much through the public safety voters.
Okay. I wish, I should wait till November, because we're going to get a big draw in November because of the national election, because if you go any sooner, the voters are going to say, I buried the school, my child didn't matter, we're just not doing it. So...
Why don't you put it out for more?
What's that?
I said, why don't you put it out for more?
Why don't you put it out for more?
It's probably going to cost more, you just learned that lesson.
No, no, listen, I'm not, I'm just letting everybody know, I mean, Peter, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but this is coming from, and perhaps Don and I spoke with the council too quickly, but we just thought this was pretty cut and dry, this isn't going to happen, because this town has a long memory, and I was just talking to a gentleman in the corner, we're still talking about public safety building, right? And so I wasn't allowed to go make the turf track field a new public safety building from when I was seven years old, so...
But isn't that progress, not a disruption, that the reason why it failed is because of the money and not because people were educated?
It doesn't matter.
And it's possible that the lawsuit is not put out.
Well, shame on us, we would.
Well, exactly, but...
We would.
But we not do what the GM has to tell the electric builders to make it work.
We are the Lord's man.
A faulty promise.
The voters didn't have the GM's test results, they didn't understand that piece of it, I don't think. I think that test alone is a classification. I had people approach me and say, I don't get why you have that stupid turf, we paid all this money for it all of the years ago, and I think you should just put in grass again.
Well, and we have that extra one.
Well, that would cost more.
Exactly.
Which is more expensive.
Which is more expensive.
I'm just, listen, I'm just letting everybody know here, including the council, I mean, if Don and I, I think, would gladly be overruled in this case, but I just, I have a real hard time to put the same project up at the same price in the same year.
There's a better chance of the voters wearing us down than us wearing the voters down in this one. You know, put the same number up, you know, second time in a row, what do we think? That's incredibly cynical.
Why didn't the best one even even want to take it?
Well, I can't, I don't, I don't know what happened or didn't happen in the hall. We approved $2 million bucks for Discover Land Trust, for money they don't really need to spend in the next 20 years. And what was the second one that passed?
Fire truck.
Okay, so my girl had a 51-year-old fire truck, it's probably going to get, you know, probably got good money out of it for some of the money on T. So those two things passed, and this didn't make it, they didn't make it out.
Do you know what parts of the field are not?
I blocked the field, and my neighbor, my old neighborhood sold the field to the school, before he was burned away.
Can I ask him if he's got the...
So I just, I'm telling you, we did spend time on this.
And please, I mean, we deserve all the traffic right now, so...
How is it that you have a test result, like, how are you not going back and thinking, this is really bad?
You know, do you want an honest answer to that? I feel like, I feel like there's a lot of hyperbole used on the school side sometimes, and I, I mean, I've heard that, you know, it's unsafe, well, it's not unsafe, the results don't say it's unsafe.
They average the field, there are portions of the field.
They did not fail that test, they didn't fail the test.
But there are portions of the field that did.
Sure, and that's what mitigation is for. And half of me is playing devil's advocate here. I actually am with you on, but I just, it passed, it passed the test, it passed the test, it is safe to play on. We have a town manager and a superintendent that had given us their word that they would put a padlock on it if it was actually unsafe, and it's not getting padlocked, so it isn't unsafe.
I'd be really cautious in saying that when you're talking about hyperbole. We had the athletic director who came to me and said, the bounds is closer to landing on concrete than it is to grass. So that to me...
Hyperbole, well, then chain it up, and then maybe we'll put a, put a chain on it, and then maybe we'll put it back.
But what you're saying is, you're not unsafe? I'm asking you, you're asking me to change my language, and asking me to change yours.
I'm saying, according to the study, it was not, it was not deemed unsafe.
It wasn't deemed to padlock it.
It was not deemed unsafe.
But it's not going to get any better on itself, it's only going to improve, is the reality, and frankly...
Oh, I agree with all of you.
It's almost a year to do the project without interruption, so the point of the conversation is, we need to avoid a crisis, either padlocking it or, you know, discontinuing sports for full...
Mr. Gill?
Isn't that the, so I'm sitting over here looking at all this, and I'm thinking about all these projects having common, and here's what they have in common, we're kicking the can down the road on all of them, and I'm very concerned with the number of things that are piling up behind the gate. I'm not talking about the gate on the field, I'm talking about in general, we have a field that's, we have a field that is not an A field, it's a C field, and I don't have kids, and I don't care what happens.
It's a D test.
Wait, I'm going to say, my point is that we have a field, we have a school that we're kind of tugged off, supposed to be talked about, but we are, we have public safety bills that are finishing, and, you know, that the people are concerned about, we have people still talking about our town hall, we have this aura in town right now that is of skepticism, and I'm concerned about our ability to address these long-term projects. If we keep pushing them to the next November, to the next June, to the next November, to the next June, we don't stop knocking things off the list, this is going to be insurmountable.
We're already...
I'm really worried about...
You do?
What do you plan? Let your council top dogs have a stone on them behind in your private meetings.
I think that's a completely fair reference. I mean, Peter just blew, Peter just blew me away, he wants to put it back up.
I'm pretty sure he said, oh, every... I mean, it's disrespectful to put the exact same thing in front of the voters again. That's a really hard thing to do. Read that. I want to get it done, that's not a bad solution. November's not a horrible solution either. I question whether anything is going to pass in June.
That's the spirit.
Well, that's it.
Why do you have another chance on the list? Oh, boy.
Oh, gee, I like it, I like it. The...
I do want to know.
The, we're getting way off track here, the, so, we made it, well, the, yeah, okay, so the consulting report is due, according to them, in late February. So my guess is, it's going to see the light of day on the agenda, March 4th would be the workshop, which we get the recommendation. But I am, we are purposely holding off till the consulting report is back with a foresight of, if we go for the song and dance, we're all going to sit there and say, let's wait for the consulting report. So we're just trying to get it all done, but...
We should just table everything until then, so we know what it is in our big picture.
Nope. I see what you're doing there, nope.
I would keep it in the future.
That's, exactly. No, you're misreading what that's...
So, just to circle back to the turf replacement proposal, I know I don't have a horse in the race, because I don't get to decide this, but, but I think, I actually, I mean, I think Peter has a good point, I think it's going to cost way more money if we break it up into two different projects, and I don't think it's disrespectful to put it back in front of the voters, because we have more information than we did last time. And just as an example, well, I mean, not an example, but I mean, we did it with the GSEA, we were like, we don't feel like people have the accurate information, and maybe we were wrong, but, you know, we worked our butts off to get all the accurate information out there and put it back on, and asked...
But that was a net revenue generator for that.
I'm just saying, Peter, I'm just, you can say the same thing, it failed. We could have washed our hands of it and said, oh, it failed, too bad.
But I think if I understood what Tom was saying, because the voters said no, if we want to have certain parts of this field operational in the fall, we need to split the project now, whether we want to or not, we can't, we don't have...
Well, that is true.
I think that's what he, so I would...
I think that's true, we want to have it done in the fall, but I think we're saying we could not have it done in the fall and have it done for the following spring.
We would then have to...
We would have to.
Does the track want to be done right away?
There are repairs that need to be done.
But the whole track?
Replacement is evident, yes, the material is actually coming up off the surface.
So if we were to get the entire amount of money, I thought you were saying we shouldn't start it in spring, because if we did, we wouldn't have ready for the fall to do the whole project.
Right, I think we would probably wait till the following spring and do it as one project, is my understanding, and I'll let those closer to it make that decision.
But we got the money this June, we wait a year to do it?
Yes.
Because that takes a little of the urgency out of it.
Well, it's a matter of, it's a matter of working around the use of the field.
So if I could just explain...
Right, just say you're selling, just say, well, give us the money this June, but we're not, I mean, that kind of goes to Ken's point about putting on another...
I can do, like, super quickly, our athletic director gave us like a long presentation, but basically, because of the way sports schedules work at the colleges, our fall schedules are smacked up against each other, they're exactly the same, so we don't have the opportunity to like move any of our home games to any of, like, to USM or any of the colleges around, but our spring schedules don't match up. So we can finagle our spring schedule to have our home games played at like USM and UNEA and some of the other colleges around. That's why it's a project that, so it wouldn't disrupt, well, it would disrupt it, obviously, because they'd be playing somewhere else, but his point was that if you did the project, if you started the project in the spring, you would, you'd be able to be done for the following fall without disrupting the spring sports, but if you started in the summer, you wouldn't be able to get it done in time to have the fall sports, and there's nowhere else to play them. That was, I don't know if that helps.
We had to, we had to like whiteboard this on a timeline, it's confusing.
This plan makes a lot of sense, Tom, this new, this plan makes, I mean, I hear your[1786.41]
I mean, I, I hear your concern, Peter, but I mean, in terms of timing and getting the project done and passing it, it, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, the elephant in the room, I, sort of your comment, I take a little bit, I mean, you just do the quick math, you do the ladder expansion, you do the school, you do the community center, and you do the field, all within a year or two of each other, it increases the tax rate by 10%. You know, we can, we can talk among ourselves all we want, we've got to get people to show up at the ballot and vote, and my concern, the reason I'm suggesting it, if we do pass those two things in November, there's not going to be an appetite to go back for the rest of this project for a while, so, it is a strategy, and I don't know what the right answer is, it's a really difficult one, I don't think anybody's questioning, you know, this work needs to get done now, it's, it's not convincing us, it's convincing what will the voters most likely approve, and what's the best way to approach them, that, that's, that's just my concern, I, I think, if, unfortunately, the next agenda, which is really, getting a better idea, maybe it wouldn't be seen they're going to fall, but, but we've got some major choices this community have, we can't have all, and, and there's a lot of wants on the list, not necessarily needs, and, and until we get a better idea of how we're going to prioritize those things, I think it impacts this decision, but I, I think we do run the risk of get half of it now, and then if we go back after all the other things are approved, the voters are going to have a... I would rather go to the voters with the same project and do a better job explaining the need than to be accused of some sort of gimmick and, you know, I, I think it's a harder message, saying we're splitting apart, I'd rather go and stand...
I think that's less respectful.
Stand tall and say, the need still exists, here's the true cause, here's a unified position by the elected body, I like your chances better than this project.
Tom, you told us that 1.2 is not the number anymore, it's going to be more than that, so you go back to the voters with a real number, whatever it is, but it's going to be more than the last number.
No, I, I believe we can stay at 1.2 if we're able to put the whole project out, I've got good heart numbers right now with contractors ready to sign the document, if it waits later, I think it's going to be more expensive, yes.
So, but, this is just something, I don't know if you can answer, but, this is in the downtown tip, is there a way to use debt revenue? Pay for this, so people went out and said, we're bonding it, we're going to pay for it from the downs?
I could check, I, I don't think so.
Or, instead of bonding it, Rocky writes a check, and we all be home like 10. You know I was going to do it to you, I'm sure.
I think I saw it.
See money, start the capital, capital, up on the capital, campaign.
The fact of the matter is, you said, June, if, if it went to the voter in June, and they passed it, the work would not happen till the following spring, is that...
More than likely, to make sure it doesn't disrupt, or we can pay him for the...
So, why wouldn't we wait till November? Because you know we're going to have three times the voters...
Because we're going to have those three huge things.
You can, it's, it's really, kind of deal with these as they come, as opposed to packing them in all at once. I think, my speculation is, part of the reason it lost is, you know, there were competing measures, and I think...
Got a small turnout, I mean, well, there's what, it's 3,000 people.
Right, so perhaps with better messaging, with a stronger position of leadership from the elected bodies, a better demonstration of need, just success would be different.
What was the turnout last June, who remember this? What was the number?
It was like 3,000, it's not, it's not different than...
No, it was, this fall was a 40, maybe. Yeah, I was going to say, it's 40, it's not, it was, uh... June was, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be, I mean, November's going to be crazy.
So, you said, cost of the rest of it is 500,000? And then in the next poll, it says, you should reserve funds for repairs, is that the, is that the amount you're referring to?
No, we'd have to do this to make sure the field's playable, June, seven weeks or whatever.
So that's an incremental amount, 500,000?
Yeah, I'd call a good money after that, we're spending that money, it's just never ripped up at some point.
So we're paying 750, three quarters of that money in boxes if we were to do this, and then we come back again, you know?
I don't know how you get to 750.